At this time, the September 24th meeting of the Ventnor City Planning Board is now in session. This meeting is being held in accordance with due public notice thereof and pursuant to the New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Notices of this meeting was advertised in the press and the current, and a copy has been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. At this time, we'll rise and salute the flag. Will the Board Administrator please call the roll?
Commissioner Landgraf?
Here.
Mike Wiesen?
Here.
Jay Cook?
Here.
Tom McAdam?
Here.
Roman Zavihut?
Here.
Lorraine Salata?
Here.
Dan Smith III?
Here.
Peter Taco?
Here.
Tim Coop?
Here.
Greer Gaskell?
Here.
Absent are Tom Halpin, Leonard Mordell, and Wendy Bartlett.
Okay, next item that we'll move to is that of adoption of the September 12th minutes. Everyone had a chance to review the minutes. Are there any changes or amendments to those minutes? Hearing none, may I have a motion and a second for adoption of said minutes?
Motion, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Those minutes are presently adopted.
And just, Mr. Chairman, the ayes should be the people who were here last month. Everyone else is technically an abstention.
Okay. Do we have a roll? Shall we do that again?
I don't think we need to, as long as it's noted that...
Okay. It's noted that the votes that are counted are those only of the members that were here. However, it is a unanimous vote.
And that's going to be the same with the adoption of the resolutions?
Right. And again, adoption of resolutions are those persons who are here and attended last month, or last meeting, I should say. We have two resolutions this evening. They will be adopted together. The first is P-40 of 2018, Paul Steinberg, 11 Nashville Avenue. The second is P-41, 2018, Gary and Linda Smith, 107 South Newark Avenue. Are there any changes or amendments to those resolutions? Hearing none, may I have a motion for...
Was Winchester on?
Winchester is not on here at the present time.
Did he do that recently? All right.
Okay.
Time flies.
Winchester is not on this agenda. May I have a motion and a second for adoption, please?
Motion, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstention.
One abstention by Commissioner Landgraf. At this point, that is adopted. It's unanimous, a unanimous vote.
Again, there's technically several abstentions, because I know, like, you weren't here last meeting.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, I forgot I wasn't here.
So, anyone who wasn't here should just be noted as an abstention.
Correct.
Thanks.
Applications this evening, there are two. We have the Ventnor Memory Park, and we also have the new business which will be discussion, or actually, old business which will be discussion of, actually, there's only one application, pardon me, and we'll have old business, the discussion of the R1 district. Ventnor Memory Park will be first. Please come forward and have any members of the party that will speak to be sworn at the time before we begin.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is a use variance application, I'm going to recuse myself.
Right, and I think Mr. Wiesen must also...
Mr. Wiesen and Commissioner Landgraf are required to recuse themselves because of the use variance involved.
The requirement is they recuse because of the class of the membership under the state So let the record reflect that both Mr. Wiesen and Mr. Landgraf have stepped down from the Board physically and have separated themselves from the Board. Okay, could you state your... We're going to swear in, so everyone that's going to speak, you'll raise your right hand, and then our solicitor will swear you in, and then you will state your name and address. He will give you direction.
Mr. DeLuque, we can just go down the line, start with Jay. Everyone just state your name and address or business address for the record, and then I'll swear you in altogether.
Thank you.
And obviously, you can note your appearance for the record, too, if you want.
Always sworn. Rick DeLuque, representing the applicant, Ventnor Memory Park. To my right, in order, are Jason Shulow, Todd Miller, Paula DeLuca, and Joseph DeLuca, Joe DeLuca.
Do you want the addresses, too?
Yeah, each of you just state your business or home address for the record, whatever's applicable.
Jason Shulow, personal planner and engineer, 9615 Ventnor Avenue, Morgan, Company of Shulow Engineering Services.
Tom Miller, architect with QOBA Architects, 15 South Forest Avenue, Ventnor, New Jersey.
Paula DeLuca, 110 North Jersey Avenue, Ventnor.
Joe DeLuque, 101 North Little Rock.
And do you swear affirm the testimony about giving the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
No.
Thank you.
The way we're proceeding in all our cases, as we do normally, is our engineer will first give an overview, and then you will proceed with your application.
That's fine, thank you.
Mr. McClellan, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. McClellan, could you please proceed with your review and a description of the application, please?
Sure, Board Chairman, Board Members, thank you very much. My report is based on the application of Ventnor, Memory Park, Esther Joseph's CEO, Memorial Charity Foundation, Inc. The address is 5004 through 5010 Ventnor Avenue, block 50, lots 13 through 16, Ventnor, New Jersey. They are seeking a use variance, and I presume preliminary and final site plan, and we can discuss that at a later point in time. The current zone it's in is in the commercial mixed-use district, and is also in the northeast, north end redevelopment zone. The materials reviewed are as follows: cover letter by Mr. DeLuque, plan and board application, the tax information, application checklist, the addendum, map and survey by Joseph Dolan, Ventnor Park, Ventnor Memory Park, by Todd Miller for the site plan, and Ventnor Memory Park concept images. The project description is as follows: The applicant proposes to construct a recreational park and open space on four unimproved building lots within a commercial mixed-use zone, which is also in the northeast Ventnor redevelopment area. The site shows a water feature, benches, gazebo, and special events area, decorative pavers, and extensive landscaping. The proposed park requires a use variance that is not specifically listed as a permitted use in this zone. The ownership is resumed and remain private. The site was fully developed as recent as 2011, or perhaps more recent than that. My zoning chart is on the page two, and other than a use variance, I put down a lot depth, which a use variance may cover that, and also the fence height, where a four-foot fence is permitted in the front yard, six-foot on the sides and rear, and an eight-foot fence The application is incomplete, provided that adequate testimony is provided, and conditions may or may not apply depending on the outcome of the hearing. I propose that the use variance we heard tonight and the site plan, the applicant's return for preliminary and final site plan is what is shown is just a concept plan, it's not a site plan, it doesn't meet all the requirements, however, I present to the applicant to present his case. My comments are addressed on page three, four, and five through six. I'd like to address some of these comments. The applicant shall testify as whether or not all design standards in section 344 of the redevelopment plan will be met, or if waivers are being requested. No waivers were requested in the application. A topographical survey shall be provided with an overall grading plan. Tree pits shall be shown on the plans with grades, details are needed. Proposed sidewalks within a public right of way are shown, details are needed. If the use variance is granted, final site plan approval may be required at a later date, as I mentioned. Sheet PD2 lists concept details. The Board may want to have more detailed plans for final review if the use variance is granted. Property is not subject to RSIS standards, however, it is subject to approval by Capeland Stores and SESC plans are required. No off-street parking is being provided, and there is not a provision in the ordinance to require off-street parking for parks. The lots should be consolidated, they are not shown as being consolidated. Existing ingress and egress easement that runs through the middle of the property shall be discussed, whether or not it will be extinguished, even if it can. The hours of operation should be indicated on the site plan. I have questions, and I think the Board should have questions, too, as maintenance responsibilities, such as trash, location of receptacles, schedule, same thing for recycling, landscape management, is there a schedule for that? Who's going to maintain? Also for pest control and pest management, is there a written plan? I recommend a written plan be placed on the site plan. Utilities, shows water features and other site amenities, such as requiring water service, sanitary sewer, will site be serviced? Shows a water fountain. Electric, location of the meter must comply with BFE standards, accessibility to a utility company. Sanitary sewer drains must comply with BFE plus three board. Lighting, a lighting plan should be required. Noise, are permanent speakers proposed? Will special permits be required for live events? These are all questions I think the Board should request. Accessory structures, such as a shed, gazebo, and shelves, details and sizes on those should be indicated. The site should not be, would not be considered a major development as per DEP standards due to the site recently being nearly 100% impervious and is less than acre of disturbance. No restroom facilities are proposed and are not likely to be required, however, the applicant shall discuss if there is any proposed. Item number 19 is open for further discussion by the Board and the applicant. Some of the redevelopment items that should be addressed, landscaping, lighting, architectural design standards, sidewalks and walkways, signs, I think there's a sign being proposed with no details, and density does not apply in this application. Recommendations of standard use variance requirements, special reasons, discussing a negative criteria and a positive criteria. And here, Mr. DeLuque has read the report, and I turn the gavel over to him at this point.
Mr. DeLuca, are you familiar with this report?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. At this time, Roger, you are complete.
Correct. Yes.
All right. If you would like, please proceed, sir.
Thank you. It's the Board's preference, I could address the comments from the engineer's report at this point.
You can proceed in any way, in any order you wish.
Thank you. In the sequence that are presented, beginning on page three, we will have testimony tonight, of course, about the design standards.
Could you do one thing for us, Mr. DeLuca? Lift the mic a little bit, and slow down a little bit so we can, everyone can understand that the recording can be taken.
Certainly. Comment one, we will have testimony tonight about satisfaction of the design standards. Our review of the standards indicates that there may be two that we don't meet, one which would be the width of the sidewalk on Ventnor Avenue, which I believe it calls for 20 feet there, and we're proposing to keep the existing width, which I believe is 10 feet, and the side buffers, I believe there's a requirement for, is an eight or a 10-foot buffer, which at least at one point, we would not meet with the present design because the gazebo proposed for the rear left corner would be closer than eight feet to the property line. So there would be some intrusion into the buffer area, and if that constitutes a waiver or requires a waiver, then we would be asking for that.
Five seconds. Mr. DeLuca, do you have this information on applied plans that you could put up for the Board so that you could show the Board where you're talking about?
Yeah.
Please put it up, please.
Thank you.
So we can follow along with your comments.
And what you'll be looking at is...
You'll have to move it closer, Todd. It's a very small drawing.
So the building that Rick is referring to is the gazebo shown on the top-left corner of our drawing, PD1.
What are we talking about first?
We're talking about the buffer.
Okay.
So we're showing that gazebo with a five-foot side and rear yard setback. And the shed as well, is also...
Where is, is that shown in your plan, that five-foot?
Yes, it's, there is no dimension on it, no.
Pardon me?
There's no dimensions.
No dimensions on your plan?
That's correct.
So it's five feet from which, from where?
It is five feet at the closest point.
Rear yard or side yard?
To both of those, five feet rear yard and five feet side yard.
Be more descriptive in your terms, please.
I'm sorry. And the shed, which is at a 45-degree angle to the corner of the property, will be five feet at the closest point to the rear yard and the side yard.
Is there a height on that?
We don't have a height on it. We expect the gazebo to be 24 feet, and the shed will be lower than that.
So we're going to have two sheds in one, looks like there's two sheds shown on the side.
Well, one is the gazebo. The top-left is the gazebo, and the top-right is the shed.
Okay, so the community garden somewhere.
Yes. And the shed will be for maintenance materials and equipment and storage of various tools and things for the operation of the park.
Roger, are you clear on that? Is that, all Board members, are you clear?
So far.
Okay. The question's been answered.
I'll keep it back to it.
Stay close.
Comment number two, about providing a topographical survey, we would agree with that. Comment three, details on tree pits, also agree with that. Number four, details on sidewalks, we agree with that. Comments five and six. Comment five references what, for the moment, anyway, is an open issue, is whether there will be a second application required if the use variance is granted for preliminary and final site plan. At the end of our presentation, if the Board is satisfied with the level of detail and information that's been provided, we'd like to reserve the right to ask the Board to, rather than require us to collect.
Mr. DeLuca, in all honesty, I can tell you, with the way this plan is presented, it's not site plan, it's not site plan quality.
I will take that as a bit of guidance as to what we should and shouldn't ask for.
It's not site plan quality.
Actually, let me finish the thought, I guess. What we were going to propose is that, at the end of it, if it was an approval, that there be a condition imposed that we would provide the information the engineer is asking for, and if that information was satisfactory to the engineer, that it would be granted as a waiver of site plan.
We'll see the plan completed, sir. We only approve completed site plans.
Understood, thank you. Number six, concept details, well, I think folds into the answer to the previous question. RSIS will make that application if approved. Number eight, no off-street parking, so no comment or no response, I guess, is required to that. Number nine, about consolidating the lots, that will happen. It's our view that when we put them all into common ownership, that that happened by operation of law, but we understand the concern of making it formal, and we would do that. The ingress, and number 10, the existing easement. Our understanding of the easement, which is, runs between two of what used to be the four separate lots, is that it was intended for the use of those two lots only, and our opinion is that that has been extinguished, it merged with the merger of the ownership of the lots. Number 11, hours of operation, yes, we would indicate them on the plan, and also there'll be testimony tonight about how it's proposed to operate and when. Number 12, maintenance responsibilities, we'll address that tonight. The plan in general, I can tell you, is to have a, Mr. DeLuca, Joe DeLuca, be the local property manager for the site, and basically to control access to the site and operations on the site, which would include, you know, making sure that the trash and recycling was properly stored and disposed of. We do have a contract already with a landscaping company, which we anticipate that will continue, and they will do the landscaping on the site, and either the landscape company or, you know, some other company would be contracted with for pest management purposes. Number 13, utilities, our engineer and architect will address that tonight. As noted, there is...
What was that number again?
Oh, the number 13.
What was the item?
It's utilities.
Okay.
Within that item, we have four subparts, water, sanitary sewer, electric, and sanitary sewer drains. There will be water, and that'll be talked about tonight by our engineer and our architect. We do not anticipate sanitary sewer at the site. Electric, we will comply as indicated in the report, and sanitary sewer drains, if any, would comply as indicated. Number 14, lighting, requesting a lighting plan, that will be provided. 15, dealing with noise, are permanent speakers proposed? We'll have testimony from Paula DeLuca, and she will tell you that the plan is to have jacks built into the gazebo, but not to have any permanent speakers. If there are speakers on site, they would be stored in the shed, when not in actual use, because otherwise, you know, they're simply a target for vandalism effect. Will special permits be required for live events? Whatever the city requires in general for events, if we have something there for, if an event is proposed that falls within those requirements, then, you know, we'll get whatever permits are needed. Accessory structures, the, actually, we don't, we're not proposing any principal structures, the accessory structures identified will be talked about in a little more detail by, excuse me, by the architect and the engineer. Comment 17, does not require response. Number 18, concerning restroom facilities, we do not propose any. 19 does not require response. Number 20, dealing with redevelopment items, during the course of our discussion and presentation tonight, there will be a description of the proposed landscaping and lighting and compliance with architectural design standards, although as a practical matter, almost all those standards apply to structures and principal buildings, which we don't propose. Signage, we don't propose any signage, but again, if that changed, then the details will be provided as part of the overall presentation of site plan-related information. And as noted, density does not apply. As for the relief that's required tonight, we agree, of course, that a use variance is the principal use, or the principal relief that we're looking for. We believe subsumed within that, for purposes of analysis, would be the three-foot shortfall in the lot depth. The existing lots are at 87 feet, and 90 feet is required at that point. But if they weren't, then, you know, they would be treated as a C variance, and we believe the testimony tonight will establish the right to that. The other variance would be for the fence height. We're proposing eight feet, basically just for security reasons, and six feet is permitted at that location. And I think at the beginning, I touched on the two, and then Mr. Miller touched on the two, design waivers, which we think apply. Of course, if there are others, then we noticed in a way to allow for, there to be, based on the discussion here, other relief.
Could you please list the design waivers, sir?
Yes, please, the design waivers were the sidewalk width, we, and I'll defer to Mr. Miller for the exact measurement, but I believe we're at 10 feet right now as a sidewalk, and 20 feet is anticipated at that location under the redevelopment plan.
Any other one?
And the other was the side buffers, the side yard buffers, which, as Mr. Miller indicated, the shed and the gazebo that are proposed would each intrude into the otherwise applicable buffer areas.
See, buffer, that's the setback.
Yeah, I think it's supposed to be a landscape buffer along the side.
Okay, they're in, they're in part of the buffer, then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You're differentiating that, just wanted to be sure that you were differentiating between the setback and the buffer.
Oh, yes, yeah, the structures themselves, then, that would be a different element of variance relief.
Very good, sir, thank you.
Thank you. And that would conclude my response to the engineer's report. We can move into the presentation of the testimony, if you like.
I would say, sir, you went through that pretty well.
Thank you very much.
Yes, you did.
As has been touched on a little bit to this point, the application we have tonight, I would guess, is of a type that's never come before the Board before. I've never heard of an application of this type in any of the Boards that I've either advised or appeared before, which is for what is commonly known as a pocket park. And it's unusual for, I guess, the obvious reasons, that in order for someone to build a pocket park, they need to have the money and the desire to direct the money to building what's going to be a quasi-public amenity. I say quasi-public, and we'll talk about that in the course of particularly...
Are you saying pocket park?
Pocket park, yes.
Okay.
It's, essentially, it's an infill green development.
Right.
Which we think, and again, we'll talk about this in our testimony, but we think it's really an excellent fit at this location, for a lot of reasons, not least of which is, within that general area of Ventnor Avenue, when I say general area, let's say, you know, four blocks, five blocks each direction, it's basically fully developed, and with likelihood, and I'm excluding the lots across the street from us, which I understand have been approved for development, so at our site, roughly in the middle of that stretch at the 5,000-block of Ventnor Avenue, you know, we have an existing vacant space, which, you know, under the plan for, with approved uses, would be, could be developed with, you know, some, some number of different uses, all of which would basically complete the unbroken, I don't want to call it a wall, it's not that, but, you know, the unbroken sequence of developed properties on both sides of Ventnor Avenue. This proposal, we think, is a great opportunity to create not just a very attractive green space within that stretch of Ventnor, but also a space that can be used by the community, by different groups in the community of all kinds, for, I'll say, I'm going to say a variety of uses, but really limited only by the imagination of the people who propose to use it, and subject, of course, to any applicable laws. So the genesis of this is that Paula DeLuca is involved with the applicant foundation, the applicant charity, Ventnor Memory Park, and they have been looking around for a while for a project within the city that would serve some of the purposes that they, you know, they want to advance here in town, creation of open space and green space, and something that will enliven and energize different community activities. And when the opportunity to acquire these lots came along, they took it. One of the lots even was purchased by auction from the city, and...
I'm sorry to interrupt, but is someone in your group going to go through the mission of this park?
Yes, Paula will do that.
Are you doing that yourself?
I'm just touching on, it's sort of an overview of where this came from.
So somebody's going to touch on the actual mission of this park itself?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, and that will be Paula DeLuca's testimony, and she'll be telling you about the, using probably as a frame of reference, a similar type, larger, but, you know, similar in concept, development that she's familiar with from Boise, Idaho, which also has a residence. So, the idea came up, an opportunity came up with this property, they retained Todd Miller, and he's drawn the plan that you've seen as part of the application, the concept drawing, and he'll get into the details of what is actually proposed and placed there. We have Joe DeLuca here, and he, in conjunction with Paula, will give you the picture of how it's anticipated that this will work, you know, operationally, how, what will be the nuts and bolts of how this site is managed and maintained and used by the public. And we have Jay Shulow, who will be our final witness, and Jay is going to talk about, you know, to the extent we have any open questions from the engineer's report, or any questions from Board members that touch on engineering or planning issues, and Jay will also discuss more specifically the applicable standards, legal standards, for the grant of the use variance that we're asking for.
I have one further question, sir.
Sure.
Now, is this originally, it was, I guess, kind of dubbed, whether it was erroneous or what... or what, a dog park? And obviously, you're going, your description is going well beyond that. You have a double gate system in here, which is typical of a pest facility. Now, will that be touched on, or do you want to briefly touch on that now, so that we get a flavor for it, what's going on?
Sure, I can touch on that, and then, of course, if you have questions for me or for Paula. In an earlier iteration, or concept, it was originally thought that maybe there'd be a good location for a dog park. For a variety of reasons, that idea was pushed aside, and the only, or the extent to which you might have pets on the site would be, you know, on certain terms, in certain times, and on leash. So, the idea of, I guess, the traditional, if there is such a thing, dog park, where you have a fenced area and dogs are free to roam within there, that's out. There was talk about it, discussion about it at one time, there was even an earlier design that Commissioner Landgraf had a chance to look at, which he commented on an aspect of that, that seemed dog-related, and how that might not be the best idea, and we took that to heart. So, no, it's not anticipated that it'll be anything close to a dog park that was talked about, but that was rejected.
Okay, because the way you were going, it didn't seem to fit.
No, no, they were incongruousnesses.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your patience.
Oh, certainly. Well, our first witness, then, would be our project architect, Todd Miller.
Can I take this over to my easel?
Wait, wait, Todd, you know the drill. Pick the mic up and go with it, and you can freelance, but no dancing, please.
You definitely don't want to see me dance.
And Mr. Chairman, I know Mr. Miller's, you've been before us, just make sure we recognize him as an expert, or if he has to go through his qualifications, it's up to you.
Todd, you're going to have to, since you are a professional, will you explain your credentials, please?
Yes, so, again, my name is Todd Miller, I'm an architect, licensed to practice in New Jersey and Pennsylvania. I've been practicing architecture for thirty-eight years.
Well, we'll let the record reflect that Mr. Miller has appeared before the board numerous times, and he is an acceptable witness.
Thank you. So, a brief sort of background of the location of the park and the neighborhood, I'm sure you've all, you're all familiar with the area, but if you'll bear with me, I'd like to just go over it. We're looking at four twenty-foot wide, currently vacant lots on Ventnor Avenue, between Nashville and Oakland Avenue. The site is currently fenced in, so if you drove by, it's the area that's fenced in. The property is surrounded by three- and four-story multifamily housing, that's very tall and massive and up to the property line, and on one side, there's currently a vacant lot. It's, the site is on the edge of a transition of Ventnor Avenue. To the north, it's transitioning to more residential purposes, and to the south is more commercial. We have the Nashville Market across the street, the veterinarian building also across the street, the Wawa's there, Saka Subs, D'Amico's, J'Kelkies are all, you know, in the neighborhood of this proposed park. We were asked to design a pocket park, which we, we think of as a small green oasis within a more, a more urban environment, if you will, an oasis that's surround, surrounded by buildings that will provide some relief visually to the community. The property is eighty feet wide, eighty-seven feet and a couple inches deep. We're proposing a number of specific functions with the interior of the park. The exterior of the park will be surrounded by an open iron-type of structure. You see an image of what we're thinking about on PD2. It's the top right photograph of a rail. We see this as an iron or aluminum-style rail with a open picket and a spear-type top. We're requesting that it be eight feet on all four sides of the property. This is, would be a very decorative, but also a security enclosure for the park. On three sides, on the inside of three sides, in that landscape buffer, we're proposing an evergreen screen, which will give the park some enclosure and screen the activities from the park from the neighboring residential uses. The focal point of the park is a splash pad, which is basically a water feature that's set into the ground. When it's not in use, it looks just like paving, but there'll be a series of water fountains that will spray up out of the, out of the ground at various times and intervals as programmed by the, by the park owners. This will be a feature that won't run continuously, but it'll be on-demand type of thing. So, if someone comes in the park on a hot day, if kids come in, they want to play in the water, you push a button, it goes on for a couple minutes, and then turns off automatically. And that's the focal point, that you'll see right in the center of the park. Surrounding that water feature will be a hardscape and a series of benches where people can relax, watch their kids play, read, read the news, do whatever, enjoy the beautiful outdoors. As we move outside that ring in the center, we're moving more to a more naturalistic design. Things are less hard-edged, they're softer, more naturalistic, and there'll be a ring of trees around there. We're thinking that we want to have some sort of fruit tree in this area that will actually be bearing fruit, so that kids can actually see that fruit doesn't necessarily come from the supermarket, it actually glows on a tree. All the landscaping in the park will be native, plant scape to our region, hopefully native to New Jersey, so it'll be easy to maintain, and it'll also be attractive to local wildlife, birds, and things of that nature. Beyond that, that center ring, we have a number of different activity zones. One of them, we touched on briefly, which is the gazebo, which would serve as a place to sit out in the shade. It could also be a small bandstand for people to have music playing at certain intervals. We're also talking about having a screen that could be pulled down from the front, and you could show movies on it, things, things of that nature that could help activate the space. The shed is, in fact, just what it sounds like, it's a shed, it's a maintenance place for all those landscaping tools and things to go, where chairs and tables might be stored when they're not needed, and that sort of thing. Up in the front left corner, there'll be a flagpole, which you can see examples of in the bottom left on PD2, and so it'll, obviously, a flagpole will have a flag during most of the year. In the wintertime, around the holidays, it could be, it could be decorated like a Christmas tree, as we're showing in those images. And then finally, on the, on the right-hand side, you see sort of a native plant, pollinator type of garden place that would attract butterflies and other natural critters that are important to our environment. And then, then finally, there's a trellis, a decorative trellis, an open trellis in the center of the facility, and it'll be something like, like we see in image six, that'll be a covered curved structure that you would pass underneath as part of the sort of symbolic entry into this pocket park.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes, we have a question coming up. Go ahead, please.
I personally view fencing, fences have three functions. One, delineation. Second, keep people in. Second, third, keep people out. To me, an eight-foot fence is more keep people out or keep people in, and it's not very welcoming. I think our ordinance, which has a four-foot requirement for up front, basically says, come on in, we're delineating, you know, this site. And I think, you know, six foot around, there's a reason for it throughout the whole, and I, you know, the whole city. I understand that you're just going to be an iron fence, right, graded, which is nice. But to me, eight feet is really excessive. Could you explain why you need eight feet?
Well, the, the primary reason is security. As an open park, we are concerned about encouraging unwanted guests after park hours, and we thought the extra height would help to ensure that that would not occur. That is the primary and really the only purpose of this decorative fence.
So, it's number three, keep people out?
Keep, yes. Keep people out after, out for hours.
Tom, yes, Tom?
Yes, a question, the pump, any controller for the pump, is that going to have some issue?
I don't know.
Another question, the, will the splash pad, is that going to be eliminated?
Yes, it will. I've seen the acknowledgement, yes. I don't know if the pump will be in the ground or, or in the shed, but it will not be a freestanding-
And the controller for set up?
The controller will be something that'll be up, that, that you can touch at hand levels. The on and off switch, is that what you're asking about?
Yeah, and, and, you know, is the pump going to be accessible to the outside of that, or will it be removed or extirped?
We're, you, you can see, this is not a, this is not a dog park in the sense that it's a very, it's a, it's a kind of a, a low-cost response there. There's a desire to make a significant investment into this place, so we're not going to do anything that's going to detract from the appearance and the operation of the park. So, if the equipment is above ground, it will be either in the shed or in a place that's locked and inaccessible. Is that, did I answer your question? Did I answer your concern?
Yes, sir.
Todd, I have an additional question.
Sure.
I guess the attorney mentioned that this is quasi-public. I take it in the sense that, since it's not municipally owned, it's quasi and for the public. Could you, you may not be the right person to elaborate that, but is anyone and everyone in Ventnor able to come in and use this reflective area? Because I see this area, basically, someone would come in, sit, enjoy the ambiance that you're, that's going to be created here. It's more of a reflective area, but can anyone, or is it really North Beach?
So, I'll let Paula answer this in detail, but it's, it's, anyone is, as far as I understand, but it's not necessarily spontaneous-
Todd, Todd, yeah, that's better.
So that if you wanted to have a birthday party in the park, you would make an application to the, to the body that runs the park, and they would reserve that space to you, that sort of thing. The gates are not going to be wide open during hours. Is that, and Paula will address that, I think, in more detail.
So, basically, look, can someone just walk in, like during the hours of the day, and just sit down on one of those benches?
You know what, I think I'll defer, I'll defer those questions to Paula, if that's all right, if you want to.
I'm going to use a group's information, would be merchants in the area-
Wait, hold on.
Would be merchants in the area who might want to stage events and use this as sort of a piazza for their area. As long as there are people there, and they're putting on an event, and anybody can walk on through the gate, the gate will be open because the park will be occupied. Joe will speak to, he's going to be possessor of a master key. So, at sundown, the park gets locked up. There will be a keyless operation, a keyless lock as well, and user groups that are approved for the purposes that they, that they state. We're talking community gardening, we're talking native species gardening, we're going to be talking, you know, moms and kids and romp groups, just a whole host of different things going on. They'll need to have a leader, and that leader would get a keyless code. And once the park has been opened at sunrise, the keyless code then will activate access to the gate for the permitted user group, so we can keep track of who's coming and going. And so, and in the sense of, is it available to the whole community? Sure. Anybody who has a certain interest that is met by what a user group purports to do will be able to walk in and find an, an open gate when that user group is there. So, I want to also speak to the double-gated entry. Ventnor Avenue can be a busy place, and although double-gated entries are typical of dog parks, so the dogs don't go rushing the gate and attack a newly arriving dog, this is also very much with, this park has children in mind. And I think that a little vestibule area is a safety precaution if a kid gets, you know, runs away from mom and heads towards, towards the opening. So, it's just, it's a safety precaution as far as getting out to the street or a busy street. So, that's why that aspect of it has been retained. In dropping by Dr. Grant's office, and in terms of dog, dog users, we might have some dog user groups where, if there's a puppy trainer, you know, the patrons of the veterinary park, who's going to be our next-door neighbor in this neighborhood, if they'd like to have sessions with a dog trainer, you know, off goes the fountain, and they've got a plaza of, of paver stones where they can go ahead and be in the outdoors, safe behind fencing, so they won't wander out into traffic, and they can have, you know, a puppy training session there. That's fine. There would be the typical presentations of liability waivers for any kind of dog bites. There would be a request for vaccination records. I mean, we're going to be fairly organized and lawyerly-minded as far as the user groups and as far as the things that are for the safety of the users and common sense. So, I hope that helps answer some of the questions. Oh, and as far as the splash pad, this is one of those projects where I've probably got a pretty good bead on who the subcontractors are going to be before we've even picked the general contractor. But the contractor for the splash pad is going to be Rain Deck out of Arizona, and they have a person that they dispatch for onsite supervision during final installation and, and beta testing, and they work with locally chosen subcontractors to make sure that the pitch is exactly right for the pad to properly drain. They've told me two, two things. One is for a small park like this, they recommend that it be a freshwater intake, and that we use either a foot-activated paddle or a hand-activated paddle for just three to five minutes' worth of time, set by an actual user wanting the spouts to go on. Over in the shed, there'll be a master controller, so that in the evening, if we want to have a continuous two- or three-hour display of LED-lit fountain water splashing, so that people have a very pretty image as they come into the town or as they leave the town, we can go ahead and set it on a timer, and it'll have LED lights lighting up the sprays of water in the fountain. It'll be very attractive, they're, they're very popular features in certain parts of the country. So, the hand activ-, we were also told that it's best to, if you do a recirculating water system, you have to test the water every day for bacterial count, because if kids are running through the water, you don't want them coming down with some sort of infection. So, it was recommended that for a small project like this, and for them, big projects are eighty-spout fountains, this is going to be a twenty to twenty-five-spout fountain, so this is a small, small thing, as these, these things go. They recommended fresh water be what is pumped as the fountain, and then that a gray-water system be adapted for feeding the, the water lines, the drip lines that are going to be for the vegetation in the park. So, I hope that addresses some of the technical.
Thank you, Paula. Did that answer your questions?
So, we have a couple of concerns. How concerned are you with the new strategy?
What are your concerns?
Given all the, you know, the Imperial smart locks, you know, running in, lots of parameters.
There, in, in addition to which, what we hope will be an eight-foot-high fence, which will be hard to scale, there will also be a motion sensor video security system onsite to see if there are any unwanted guests to help with those issues. It's certainly, you know, security was certainly an issue- to help with those issues. It's certainly, you know, I, security was certainly an issue for us, which is why we're proposing this fence. But there will be, uh, there will be that, that Wi-Fi, uh, video system as well, if that...
The, the way it's explained, that won't even be a problem because you'll need a key to get in there. You, you just can't wander in.
That's correct.
Yeah, so that's not even going to be a problem. They're going to jump an eight-foot fence? There's a little bit of need to get out of the floorwalk and do your thing if you're rather than jumping eight-foot fence.
I'd like to comment on something. At a time when the theater, the theater deal was considered to be dead, and we started down the long path of investing in these parcels of overlooked infill lots, which was October, this fine gentleman here and I and a realtor were reconnoitering that lot. Eleven o'clock of a bright sunny October morning, and as we were reconnoitering the lot, standing respectfully on the sidewalk to do our little measurements and figuring out if there were any possibilities, from behind a nearby apartment building, a young emaciated gent clutching a bottle with a paper, a brown paper bag around it, came lunging in an, an attacking fashion and yelled at us, "Get off my land." Now, I'm sorry, but I'm very well aware that we are staking an investment for the beautification and benefit of Venter presenting itself as the proverbial decorative table in the front foyer to up, to upclass the image of the town at its, uh, nearby accessway from Atlantic City. That's part of what this is. This is beauty personified, well-maintained, that is intended to impart an entering image to people visiting the town and coming in through that entryway, and a parting image of the town as they leave towards the border. So I think that going ahead and doing something that is thought through is better than just leaving it be. It's been left to be for quite a while. I have, uh, I, I, I understand that there, um, there's a comment that the, the, there was still development on the lots as recently as 2011. I have some photographs from April of 2009 showing orange demolition equipment taking down some row houses in at least two of the lots, 5008 and 5010. So by my reckoning, just from those two lots, which we now own, it's been, you know, it's been ten years. Ten years is a long time. Empty land and nobody really speaking up to claim it or do anything with it. So you get a little tired, you know, if you love a town enough, you get a little tired that a section of it might be looking bedraggled, and you want to make it better. You want to make it beautiful, so.
Paul?
Yeah?
Uh, I, I think you're on the right track, and, uh, again, go ahead, going ahead. And, uh, we're, we're, we're interested in seeing what your plan is and how to do it, so, um, let's just, we'll just stay on track. And, uh, we're working on it.
Yes, sir.
Do you talk about the site lighting? Any lighting proposed internally, and so will that lighting pose any problems for surrounding Venter?
We, we don't have a lighting plan for you to look at today, but we will be providing site lighting, which will be directed down into the park as opposed to open exposed bulbs that, that will shine light sideways and, and things of that nature. There will also be security lights that will remain on after hours, just so that it's not a dark inviting place for people to, to hide. And, and of, and of course, I, I, I haven't said this, but of course, the entire park will be handicap accessible.
Hey, we what?
Will be handicap accessible.
Okay. Uh, who is next up for you, Jean? We had a preview. Okay.
A couple of questions, please, so we can focus on some of the issues that the board's identified.
Okay.
Let's start with Venter Memory Park. What's its mission?
Could you take the microphone?
Um, why don't you, uh...
The mission is stated, the, the park, the, um, Venter Memory Park as a nonprofit was incorporated December 5, 2017. It filed a long form 1023 in February. It's been given, recog-, it's been granted its qualifying letter by the IRS as of August 21. Its stated mission is conservation native species and space, open space preservation in an urban environment. So it's, that's its philanthropic mission. It is classified, it's got a subclassification as a public operating charity, which takes a few more hurdles than some of the other more simplistic filings of nonprofits. So that's its basic thesis, uh, and it's an approved chari-, recognized charitable function. I have a dossier here, which has a whole lot of incorporating documents. I'm not going to turn it over yet, but I can get it photocopied and provide it to the planning board so that the bona fides of the nonprofit can be verified.
Well, let's, go on, I take the word, um, accept the rest of the picture. Entity has a proper form and its mission. Uh, let's talk for a second about its funding specifically. Those need charities, as we can see, have the funding available to complete this project as it is approved.
Yes, it does. Um, we plan on being able to advance it. We can do it as a no co-, a no-cost loan, a no-interest loan, and take a partial write-off, depending on whether people respond to fundraisings on it, on its behalf, or we can write off the whole thing. I'd really like to get spades in the ground. We've got a lot of rubble there, there's some remit residual foundation and crumpled concrete, and I'm thinking Casey Fraser is probably going to be brought in with his excavation equipment to go after that. And then we also are likely to be using Clemensons native species gardening as the, the most reputable that we can find. And we have to work with Mother Nature. So putting up bricks and mortar, you can kind of do any sort of season. There are optimal times of seasons and optimal times of the year for putting in, uh, different kinds of plants and trees and shrubs, so. But, uh, I'd, I'd love to see it, you know, open and ready by next summer.
Let me spell now, and, and forward, you anticipate, uh, considering self-funding and if the public funds, getting donations from the public as well as user fees, modest user fees for due to the purpose?
Yes, so the, once it's up and, and operational, the expenses are not going to be high. I've just priced its liability policy, and it's around thirteen hundred dollars a year for insurance. And, um, we'll have water charges, obviously, but there's water conservation measures that can be used in terms of using the gray water for watering the plant life, um, once it's been used for the fountain fun. I think that it, it should be self-sustaining. Now, I want to, I'm going to be very realistic, too. It's going to be a kind of, for long-term, it's going to be a use it or lose it proposition for the citizens of Venter. One of the things that our, our estate planning council and, uh, nonprofit gurus recommend it is that every nonprofit should have, anticipate that there may come a day where future trustees are not as interested, not as active, and they aren't going to really do things right. So what do you do then? So should this park ever reach that stage, the land will be sold and the proceeds will go to the Cora Hartshorn Arboretum in another part of New Jersey. So it'll benefit something that exists elsewhere in New Jersey that's dedicated to the same purpose as this nonprofit. But, I mean, that's just realism. Okay.
Just to add, talk a little bit about the anticipated operation that we talked about and were discussing, that they're anticipating a wider range of user groups, interest groups, many civic groups, many religious groups, many people of their common interests, each of which would then be funded, I assume by a representative, and would then be authorized through a leader to have access to the park.
Exactly.
Right, and you also have a contract in place with the landscape service to maintain the park and its built.
Right now, not, not for once it's built, because we may still go with Clemensons. We're, we're taking a look at what's going to be surrounding the, uh, fruit-bearing trees. And it may be grass, in which case we've got to get somebody in there cutting and trimming. It may be so-called steppable plants. These are low brown cover, they're pretty foot-traffic resistant, they're very attractive, and they're, and they're easy care, so that all that needs to be done is trimming and edging and not necessarily a weekly lawn cutting. So, um, if it requires lawn cutting, it'll probably be Daniel's Landscape tasked with that. We've been using them for our home for years, and so far, knock wood, we haven't had any code citations for our home in Venter, so.
I wonder the other team here that identified, uh, on the basis of the beginning was pest control. Now, represented that the labor arrangements, the people labor arrangements to add whatever pest control is necessary, provided by their contract, is necessary.
That's accurate, yeah. Um, uh, in terms of rats and what, I mean, we are, we're, we're going to be enclosed to where there are restaurants and where there's high-density housing and where there's dumpsters. And so one never knows what's going to be hitting the trash barrel, so, um, I would imagine that, you know, a Terminex type of a, a contract is going to be trotted out for, um, regular inspections, especially during the pest active season, uh, much the same as homeowners take out to cover them from April until about October.
And I'd also represent a void response to another of the engineer's comments, that relations will be made for the proper onsite storage of any trash and incarcibles, and to make sure that they find ways to curb or otherwise outspouse them, which is part of my law.
That's correct. We'll probably have a private cost, a trash contractor rather than trying to do anything with ACUA, because that requires, that requires curbside. And I just really don't want to have anybody tipping things over at curbside, so it just seems more sensible to give certain selected contractors master key copies.
And in that thing, like, we discussed about the fact that there will be a, an event for proper management.
That's correct.
And that person is anticipating that he's got the leadership.
Right, that's correct.
Where they can manage.
Exactly.
And Mr. DeLuca will have the, uh, control of access to the site, and will also be the contact person for the user groups and for the city, if the city has any issues or questions about the operation.
Yes and no. He's going to be the holder of the master key and, uh, the, the, the watching eye. Uh, at, at present, we are a three-trusty, uh, nonprofit with stated plans to expand to a total of seven to nine trustees, who would be people who are full-time residents here in Venter. And I would expect to see those trustees become more involved in the day-to-day operations and consideration of user groups. Um, in sounding out user groups, sounding out, after we let it be known that we, uh, had bought the land and had these plans, um, I've got a lot of phone calls and a lot of messages and people's ideas. And, um, I did a walk-around letter, and if somebody wants to provide this to all the members of the board, um, I did a walk-around letter in July, and it pointed out some of the ideas that had come from people here in town. I mean, I'm not looking to say, hey, here's this park and I dictate that these be the uses. I'm looking for it to be something that's organic and what people want to do and what their interests are, achieve some measure of self-expression with how the park is used. So that, uh, that walk-around letter from July has a nu-, an enumeration of some of the ideas. And, um, The Way of Life Church Pastor James volunteered as parishioners to be helpers with park cleanup if we wanted those volunteers, and they're gung-ho about the, uh, winter gardens-a-glow idea for the holidays, which the basic idea is not just putting a hula hoop, a, a hoop-fashion, uh, lighting apparatus on a flagpole. It's lighting up every piece of vegetation inside the park, so it's just bright, it glows, and it says, "Welcome to the holidays." And, um, in towns that have winter garden-a-glow features, in small botanic gardens or in pocket parks, that it typically runs from Thanksgiving through, uh, through Christmas or New Year's.
And Mr. DeLuca, I'll call this A1, this, uh...
July 2018 letter.
Letter to neighbors that you circulate.
You gave the letter to neighbors?
I'll call it A1, just because I don't think it was part of the package. Thank you.
We will be discussing the, you know, the issue was raised about annual maintenance, the landscaping and such like that. We will be addressing that aspect.
Well, uh... With the question on that, that you will have a land, you will have a landscape contractor who is going to be responsible for maintaining all the plants and the vegetation, you know? Uh, right now, nothing's there except for aggressive weeds. Uh, they have Daniels to maintain it and they anticipate using that, but depending on what species end up in there, they may go with Clemensons because they have more experience in maintaining native species. But, you know, there will be a contractor who is responsible.
This is a great idea. I have, you know, I like the idea. It's going to help make North Beach more attractive. But I want it to be maintained. I want it to be kept up. And you did raise the issue that, you know, it's this being a nonprofit, you know, the money coming in, you know, could go down. I would like to see that, that, you know, that as much guarantee that you can give that it'll be maintained as well into, into the future as possible. Because I, I don't want to lose this amenity once it comes in, but it, you will be responsible to have to make sure that it's well-maintained. The upkeep. So that's really what I, what I want to hear, is what's in the plan to do that.
Well, as I say, the plan is certainly to have a contractor. Uh, the board may want to consider as a condition of an approval that we have to provide you, say on an annual basis, with a copy of the contract with whomever is that contractor, uh, so you'll have that evidence upfront that we do have somebody that we retain to do, you know, so, between two or three weeks.
I, I, uh, I worry about, the maintenance is, is a big problem for me as well. And I'm concerned, I understand that you will have people coming in tending to the shrubs and the plants and whether, probably in the summer on a weekly basis, but on a daily basis, when you have groups coming in, like for debris and trash left behind, you don't want it to start to look, you know, shabby. And that's where I'm concerned, too, like on the daily basis, who's picking up the trash?
Excellent question. One of the things that we anticipate, because it's all going to be with the user part, is going to be specific to user groups, is that in order to become a user group and to have permission to go there or to continue going there, you're going to have to basically, you know, whatever you bring in, you got to take out.
It doesn't work that way. It doesn't always work that way.
Uh, but once it doesn't happen the first time, then that's it for that user group.
The question is, when it doesn't happen, who cleans it up?
Oh, we'll have, uh, not that we don't have anybody, you know, already in mind to do this, but it would be a perfectly reasonable condition to require that we have a, a backup plan or contractor to make sure that if our anticipated voluntary plan cleanup doesn't work, that we have somebody there that makes it work.
Usually they do. That's why, that's why the question comes up. They have somebody, somebody's always designated for the what-if.
Yeah, then that would be somebody who would be coordinated through Mr. DeLuca as on property.
Unless I'm not understanding, too. I, I understand the user groups, but you also have the public coming in there at times when the gates are open? Did I understand that correctly?
Uh, there could be.
Well, and that becomes an issue for trash. User groups will probably, will probably pick up after themselves because they've paid to use it and if they want to use it again. But how about somebody just wanders in and sits on a bench and eats their lunch and leaves the debris there, you know? Uh, you, that's kind of harder to control.
It, that's true. Um, we're not really anticipating those kind of public events or that kind of public access, more that there might be times when there is, let's say, a musical performer is going to be at the gazebo, and you open the gates then to let anyone come in, even if you're not affiliated with the user group. And your point is well-taken that once that event is over, somebody's got to clean up. We, that same, I would anticipate the same person who is our backup to the user groups and who will be, when they're using it, they're the first responsible parties to clean up. So we will have a backup to that. That same backup would then simply move into the first position for public events.
Maybe I'm not understanding. If I'm not part of a user group and I would like to go sit in that park, but I don't have key, I don't get in?
No, there will be...
Well, how about if, uh, excuse me, you have a Venter fishing pier where people can buy a key, okay? That would add to fundraising. You can screen whoever you want, and if somebody wanted to buy a key for a hundred and fifty dollars a season, a year, however you want to couch it like that, I think anybody buying a key for that kind of money would might want to go in there and read a book or just have that access.
Uh, you know, that's not something we talked about specifically, but, you know, certainly something to talk about. It may have married as a fundraising tool. It may have merited a fundraising tool.
And that would open it to people of the public that would use it properly.
You'd anticipate that. If you're paying that money, you would use it properly.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's something we could definitely consider.
So is this, is it the public or is it not the public?
Not, that's why I called it quasi-public at the start. It will be available to user groups, you know, groups of people who are affiliated with one another for whatever purposes. Uh, and, you know, you anticipate you might get a religious group, you might get a community group, you might get some of the area businesses want to do something outside as, as a group. Whatever user groups define, are defining themselves to us, once they're approved, uh, then they would have access.
You're saying it was, I, yes, but it was...
Yeah, because you can't just walk in off the street?
No.
And part of this is also has to do with scheduling. Um, there's a pocket park that was very much the template for what this one is. It's called Ketchum Memory Park. It was financed through acquisition of land and park improvements by a guy named Jim Chamina in a lovely resort town. And right on their website, they have a signup, so if you want to stage an event there, they can slot you into the calendar for whatever event it is. And sometimes it's the city, and they need the park for the grand marshal's parade for the big or wagon parade, and, and they're going to be giving their kickoff speeches there. So there's a calendar to be considered. And you wouldn't want to have, you know, maybe a, a Bible camp, a church Bible camp has gone and reserved several days to use the park for their activity, and somebody with a freelance key just wandering in like it's the fishing pier. So we have to be sensitive to, we have to be kind of sensitive to...
They would follow the rules. They, they would have your rules.
Yeah. Where somebody could wander in, somebody who, who wanders in...
Why don't we do this? Why doesn't debate your fundraising programs here?
Pardon me?
I, I don't want to get too far into debating fundraising, how you...
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying, we want to keep a, we want to keep a handle on the schedule and the users and, and not have intrusions on those who have an expectation to use the park.
That's a private, that's a private discussion there.